Today's invocation will be given by Father Michael of St. Michael Orthodox Church. If everyone would please silence your cellphone and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, now and ever and unto ages of ages, amen, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us a ... the kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and ever and unto ages of ages, amen. O God, our God, we have adorned us with your image and given us free will. You also taught wisdom to Solomon. Look down even now, Maker and Creator, upon our authorities, the mayor of this honorable city council, and grant them wisdom and understanding that they may learn your holy will. Warm their heart in love for you and for our neighbors. Guide them on the way of truth and righteousness, keeping their heart from all evil. Unite them in one mind, in one heart, and let mutual brotherly love abide in their midst. Bless them for the doing of good and useful things. We pray thee, O most merciful Lord, our God, the God of every compassion and consolation, do not turn away your face from them, and all of us here present, for we have set our hope in thee. Grant to our great city of Beaumont, our country, and all of us peace and seniority, and unity of spirit, conquer and fruitful action, and all those things needful for our temporal and eternal life. You know our needs, and you grant and fulfill our requests even before we make them, for you are the glory and mercy and the lover of mankind, and unto thee we ascribe glory, to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Mayor, roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Doryo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Here. All right, well, today we have six proclamations and one presentation. And the first proclamation will be recognizing the Southeast Texas Honor Guard. It's Nurses Week. Accepting will be the Southeast Texas Honor Guard founding mothers, Jamie Wright, Carrie Singleton, Diana Miles, Kathy Rogers, Tara Loden, and Pi Navy. I apologize if I got a name wrong. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you guys for what you do.
Come on.
Thank you guys. Thank you for what you do.
Hello, how are you?
Good to see you. Okay. Back up a little bit. Three. One more. For me, please. One, two, three, I got it. Nursing is a calling, a lifestyle, a way of living. Nurses here today honor all nurses across our great community here in the city of Beaumont and their dedication to nursing. During Nurses Week, we acknowledge that patients suffer. We must acknowledge that the work caregivers do is complex, important, and both physically and emotionally challenging. Our mission is nursing makes a difference when we step into people's lives to improve their health from the start of life through the end.
Will all active and retired nurses present, please stand as we honor nurses and recite together the Nightingale Pledge.
I solemnly pledge myself before God and in the presence of this assembly to pass my life in purity and to practice my profession faithfully. I will abstain from whatever is deleterious and mischievous and will not take or knowingly administer any harmful drug. I will do all in my power to maintain and elevate the standard of my profession and will hold in confidence all personal matters committed to my keeping and all family affairs coming to my knowledge in the practice of my calling. With loyalty, will I endeavor to aid the physician in his work and devote myself to the welfare of those committed in my care.
Thank you so much to City Council and to the mayor for allowing us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, next, we have a proclamation recognizing May 6th through the 12th, 2025 as National Nurses Week. Accepting will be Holly English, Christus Health, Southeast Texas Public Relations Specialist, and I'm assuming we have a number of nurses here. All right, come on forward.
I appreciate you for what you do. How are you guys? Appreciate you.
Good to see you. How are you doing? Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
How are you doing? Thank you.
Thank you, brother, for what you do.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All those handshake and yeah. Thank you for what you do.
Again?
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you.
Yes. Thank you, guys. I think one of those is mine. Yeah. Okay.
A great looking group of heroes. Okay. Okay, here we go. Good afternoon, everyone. It is an honor to stand before you today as we gather to celebrate and recognize one of the most important and inspiring weeks of the year, Nurses Week. This is a time set aside not just to recognize the hard work of nurses, but to reflect on the depth of their dedication, their compassion, and the powerful role nurses play in our healthcare system. Nurses are not just caregivers, but we are advocates, educators, leaders, and healers. We are often the first to respond and the last to leave. We are the constant in a patient's journey, bringing knowledge, strength, and comfort to those in our care. Nurses everywhere bring calm to chaos and hope to uncertainty. We shoulder the burdens of others with humility and grace, often putting the needs of patients ahead of our own. Nurses work long hours and the emotional weight of what you carry every day, your resilience has never wavered, and for that, we are deeply grateful. Let this week be more than just recognition, let it be a reminder that your work matters, that you are seen, and that you are valued. We celebrate your courage, your expertise, and your unwavering heart. To all our nurses, past, present, and future, Happy Nurses Week. You truly are the heart of healthcare. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got a full house today. Overflowed. All right, next, we have a proclamation recognizing May 4th through the 10th, 2025 as National Travel and Tourism Week, and accepting will be our CBB Director of Marketing, Sadie, and we've got everybody coming through.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Right here, one, two, three. Got it.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and the Councilman for allowing us to proclaim this week as National Travel and Tourism Week, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The travel and tourism industry is so important to Beaumont, and the Office of the Governor released the travel data from 2024. And last year, visitors came to our city and our region and spent $391.9 million. That is money that goes directly to our economy, our local businesses, our favorite restaurants, and our favorite small business owners. It also supports nearly 3,100 jobs, and last year, it also generated 303... oh, sorry, $33.5 million in tax revenue. So, all this money supports our economy and makes Beaumont such a great regional destination. So, with National Travel and Tourism Week, we'd like to also invite everyone to join in on our Beaumont Bucket List Challenge. We really want to highlight the area's offerings, and there's so much to do, so much to see, from shopping, history, attractions, museums, restaurants, nature and outdoors, arts and murals, events and entertainment, and so much more. The goal is to boost the city's image while also highlighting so many things to do. There's so many unique experiences to our area that make it so easily accessible and giving visitors and residents the opportunity to explore the city with a new lens through this challenge. So, we invite you to participate and discover the city's offerings, follow our social media, visit beaumonttx.com. We're posting challenges each day to highlight the different buckets of Beaumont, and you have a chance to win prizes and get some Beaumont swag. Also, this app is accessible through the Beaumont CBB website. Visit beaumonttx.com, and you can download it. It's free. You can check in at various attractions, restaurants, hotspots. There's a point system that you check into, and the best part about this is that even though we're kicking it off during National Travel and Tourism Week, we're also pushing it out all summer long to create a summer of fun here in Beaumont. Again, we encourage everyone to download the app, and we want you all to celebrate Beaumont's tourism industry. Thanks again to the Mr. Mayor and the City Council and Mr. City Manager, and thanks for the support over the years.
Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation recognizing May 22nd as National Maritime Day, and accepting will be Mr. Ivan Mobley with the Port of Beaumont Seafarer Center.
One more.
One more. One more.
Sorry, one more. Two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
Yes, sir. Now, we have a proclamation recognizing May 10th as the Mediterranean Day Festival, and accepting will be Father Michael with St. Michael Orthodox Church.
Right here, and one, two, three. Got it.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for having us. Thank you for this proclamation. We're excited to do this again. This is our 14th Mediterranean Day Festival, not consecutively. We took off two years for COVID, and we took off last year because we hosted a conference, but we're back and just as good, if not better than ever. It'll be a lot of fun. We hope you can come out. We have... it's all homemade food. We don't do restaurants, so we have our Greek booth, and we have things like the yaros and pistachio and dolmas, the Greek grape leaves, and we have our inside Mediterranean plate that we've been serving for well over 100 years. We just integrated it into the festival when we started having it, and we have a lot of different types. We have the Middle Eastern grape leaves, we have falafel sandwiches, kofta sandwiches, just all kind of food. Children activities, if you have children, bring your children. We have a big playground. There'll be a lot of blowups and things for them to jump on and face painting and a petting zoo, and we have, of course, church tours inside, and we have a shopping bazaar if you want to look for things that may be unusual. So, thanks again, and we always enjoy hosting this. It's a lot of work, but when Saturday comes and we see everybody out having a good time, it makes it well worth it. It's good. So, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have the festival this year. As they said, last year, we couldn't because of the conference. We brought half of America to Beaumont in our conference last year, so we were very busy, and we're a small community. St. Michael Orthodox Church also celebrated 125th anniversary last year. Our people, the Christians on the Middle East, the church that was established by the Apostle Peter and Paul, the Church of Antioch in the Book of Acts, when the Christians, the disciples of our Lord Jesus Christ, they were called Christian for the first time. That is the church that we have in Beaumont, and it's the second oldest Orthodox Church in United States and Canada, so we have the second oldest church. Our people, they brought their tradition, their faith, because they want to worship with freedom from the Middle East. St. Michael is part of the community of Beaumont for all this year, and also, we want to be more assertive in the community. This year, we selected the ARC organization, the ARC organizations, so part of the proceed of the festival go always, always, to a local organization of Beaumont. So, every year, we pick an organization. So, we are very proud. I'm very proud of my people. They're a small community. I have been in service at St. Michael Orthodox Church for the last 25th year, also 25 years. It's a great community, and we are very proud to be part of the community of Beaumont, Texas. So, welcome to our church, welcome to our festival, and have a great, great, great time. Opa! If you want to... this year, we have something very amazing. We are... we have a raffle this year. It's only 150 tickets, and that raffle is a cruise to the Greek Islands. Cruise to the Greek Islands for two people, everything included, from Houston to Italy, going to the Greek Islands, and we want you to have a good time. So, it's only 150 tickets that we have, and that is going to be the day of the festival also. So, get your tickets. God bless you. God be with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, our last proclamation, we're recognizing May 10th as American Legion Second Division of Texas Day. Accepting will be Chris Duryo, no, will be Second Division Commander Clifton Guillory.
Hey, right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
Well, nice to be back here. Mayor West and the members of City Council. I just am grateful to accept this proclamation on behalf of Dory Miller Post 817, the American Legion. This Division Convention represents 95 posts in our area, everywhere from Port Arthur to Waco, from Orange to Katy. They're going to come in and celebrate the good works that we do. And, you know, our mission is to serve our community, and not just our veterans, but our children and youth. It doesn't matter whether they're veteran children or not. We go into schools and we teach flag education. The big thing we got going on right now is Boys and Girls State, where we're going to have 1,200 young men and women, well, the women is about 600 of them at another university, but we're going to be at the University of Texas, all expense paid, and we're going to bring them in to the state Capitol, and they're going to learn about city government, all the way up to the state government, and they'll get a chance to shadow representatives and even the governor for one day. And hopefully, and a lot of them do, they get that education, and they come back to their hometown and try to come and take your seats. Thank you very much. This is a great honor. We appreciate the acknowledgement.
And now, we're going to have a presentation for the City of Beaumont Communications Update.
Good afternoon. In this week's council announcements, we have a few more days left, as we heard, to enjoy National Travel and Tourism Week, which runs through this Saturday, May 10th. A fun-filled week allows you to get in on exclusive discounts, win some great prizes just for visiting some of the area's greatest attractions. For information on the Beaumont Bucket List that you heard Sadie talking about, you can check that out on Visit Beaumont's website and Facebook page, so go out and then support our local businesses. We need your help to stamp out hunger in Beaumont. The city is proud to support the National Association of Letter Carriers with the largest one-day food collection effort in the nation, and this year, it's more important than ever. With major federal food programs recently being cut, the Southeast Texas Food Bank has told me that they're facing a shortfall of 900,000 pounds of food. That equals 750,000 lost meals for our area families. Right now, nearly one in five people in our area face food insecurity, including 26% of our seniors, almost 30% of our children, which is the highest food insecurity rate in the nation. So, we're asking you to drop off nonperishable food items at any of our Beaumont fire stations now through Friday, or simply leave some nonperishable food items in your mailbox for your mail carrier to collect on Saturday, May 11th. So, we want everybody to come together, fight hunger in Southeast Texas. There's just a couple of days left to sign up for Beaumont's Track Club. Stop by the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center on Gulf Street to register kids 5 through 18. Registration runs through this Friday, May 9th. We have several things coming up on May 17th. First off, there's a free symposium for boys and young men's 6th grade and up. Join us for Straight Talk for Young Men. It's a powerful event focused on decision-making, financial literacy, emotional intelligence, and accountability. Mark your calendars for Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is also at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center on Gulf Street. It is free to the public, and lunch will be provided. Great opportunity for our young men. Also, on Saturday, the 17th, we hope you'll take action to protect your home and community with free household hazardous waste and tire collection. You can dispose of these items at the Bridge City Intermediate School parking lot between 8:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. It is open to all Southeast Texas households, those in Beaumont as well, and this is your chance to safely get rid of paints cleaners, motor oil, car batteries, pool chemicals, and they're also accepting old tires. The first eight are free, and then it's $3 each after that. So, let's do our part to keep Southeast Texas safe, clean, and beautiful. And speaking of cleaning up, we hope you'll join us for our citywide cleanup. BIST campuses kick things off on Friday, the 16th, and the community-wide event happens Saturday, May 17th, between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. We'll meet at the John Paul Davis Community Center on East Lucas. Registration starts at 8:00. You'll receive a map with your assigned cleanup area, gloves, trash bags, snacks, and drinks will all be provided. We hope you'll join us to make a difference in our neighborhoods, and that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you. And for those that are here for proclamations and presentations and you'd like to leave, now's the time to do so. I think that's all happened. All right, we're going to move into public comments. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, our regular agenda items 1 through 3, or any other topics. Items 4 and 5 have already been heard in public hearing. Planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, citizens cannot speak on those items. Citizens wishing to speak on Item 6 will be given the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Larry Gauthier.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. I have spoken about dirty electricity. But what about electrical fires? And that it can kill you needs to be looked at. I have spoken also about seismograph testing and the destruction of homes that took place in the 80s. Over 60 in Terrell Park area alone was damaged. Amelia area was complaining also. North End, Southeast End, also trespassing and discrimination, and the list goes on. I appreciate this be looked at, as we have been a victim of a lot of these things. Thank you for your time of listening. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Renick.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm Scott Renick. I'm a local attorney here in Beaumont, Texas. I'm appreciative of the time to speak to you today. Specifically, I wanted to speak about, briefly about Article 6, the gaming sites and gaming machines ordinance. I'm here representing several small law-abiding business owners here in Beaumont. Corner stores, family-owned convenience stores, each of whom operates five or fewer gaming machines legally under what the city has designated as accessory gaming. These are not game rooms. These are not casinos. These are corner stores, laundromats, and convenience stores, many family-run, who have followed every step required by the City of Beaumont to operate within the law. These machines are not the backbone of these businesses, but they are critical supplements that helps these businesses stay afloat, especially in today's difficult economy. These are local businesses that have followed every step and every rule the city has put in place to operate within the law, and my clients have done so in good faith. Under the current gaming ordinance, these small business owners have paid application fees to register, paid an annual occupation tax and registration fee, which is thousands of dollars annually, purchased and displayed city-issued decals and signage as required, paid for architectural modifications to their businesses to meet compliance, including transparent windows, signage installations, adjusted customer access points. And for my clients, that alone has ranged between $20,000 to $40,000 for each store. They have invested in security camera systems, which have also cost thousands of dollars. They have limited their hours of operation and made their machines physically inaccessible outside of approved hours. All of this was done with the understanding that they were working with the City of Beaumont, not against the City of Beaumont. They did that, and they have continued to comply in good faith. These business owners didn't tolerate the ordinance, they invested in it. And now, they face the possibility that this legal structure, which they relied on to make business decisions, could be repealed outright with no wrongdoing and no showing of harm. Why repeal this ordinance now? There is no data that has been presented to show that these five machine gaming setups cause harm. There is no evidence of increased crime and disruption at these locations. These machines are in plain sight, not tucked away, they're registered and monitored. Instead, what is real is the financial benefit they bring, not just to our shops, but to the city. These accessory machines are taxed and registered. They help sustain the small business, many in underserved parts of Beaumont. This repeal would be especially harmful to small and minority-owned businesses who would depend on every legal tool to stay afloat. We want to move forward together, and we want to support the city and maintain that these small businesses are the lifeblood of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Alana Thompson.
Hello, my name is Alana Thompson. I don't talk to my neighbors. I've lived in my house for several years, and I don't think I even see them as people, just as background noise. I know their names, maybe an occupation or two, but that's all I know. I never thought to ask myself why I don't get to know them. It's just something I've always accepted as normal. It's something I feel guilty about sometimes. And then I shoot those thoughts away because I have more important things to focus on, right? But that's so convenient, isn't it? Hyperindependence, turning actual people into faceless and nameless extraterrestrials that have nothing to do with my own life, a lack of trust even. It's so easy and it scares me. Humans weren't supposed to live like this, cut off from each other, focused solely on themselves, self-sufficient to the point of detriment. I mourn the death of community. I always swore I would never be like people who stood by in history. No, no, I'd be different. I'd never be brainwashed, you see. I'm stronger than that. I'm better than that. And then when my neighbors started to get swept away without due process to a foreign country they don't even belong to, to conditions I can't even bring myself to fathom, a whole country became silent. I became silent. But we have good reasons, don't we? We can be hypocrites of our own principles out of fear. Why, that's just the American way. I mourn the death of my morals. Maybe I don't get to know my neighbors because I would find myself in them. Maybe the truth would scare me. Maybe because then I couldn't get to justify my indifference to them. Indifference, hatred, apathy, fear, whatever your reasons may be, I don't know. But I do know that we can't treat people like they aren't people. I can't do it anymore. My neighbors are terrified. They're overcrowded like livestock. They're disappearing without a trace. Don't need to remind anyone in this room of what happens to people who are vanished to foreign concentration camps. Please do not delude yourselves into thinking America wouldn't do that. We have done it, we never stopped. I mourn my neighbors being persecuted, dehumanized, and condemned to fate's worst and death by a country that was supposed to symbolize freedom and hope. No, I'd never be like those people in the past. I'd never turn a blind eye for my own fear of personal safety or out of my own apathy. I'd never justify every single step of the 10 stages of genocide, rationalizing with every new step that we won't ever get to the next one. I'd never be trying to find reasons why I can't call it exactly by its name right this second, except I am doing that, and I know a lot of you are too. It's so easy to deceive our own selves and everything we stand for in order to face an almost unspeakable truth, but we have to speak it anyway. We say we would never be those people until we find ourselves becoming them. We say we aren't like them. Prove it. Excuse me now, I owe my neighbors a visit.
Dean Tucker.
2550, long, having a moment. Thrilled to be here. To talk to you. Last week, when I spoke, it was one of the hardest things I've ever done, was, and I spent days to consolidate a simple message of healing. I've studied for 55 years in two and a half minutes. Anyway, so, it never, so here we go, we have two minutes and 30, 30 seconds, whatever. So, applaud, and I've run for City Council twice and other positions. Was elected U.S. House of Representatives candidate for the Libertarian Party. Not that that matters, never hope of winning, but applaud all the people that have run for office. It's amazing that you, what you did and the energy that you put forward to make this city better. Applaud, and winning and losing, which several of you have said it's the same, there's no difference between winning and losing, you still want to make this city better. And that's why I'm here. It's a miracle that I'm here, that I was brought to this city. How much happened? One minute, 30 seconds. It's a miracle. I met a woman, female, dentist, traveling through. I created a little slideshow when I was almost homeless in California, and then a little about love, truth, and healing, and, and people responded. So I was traveling around the country, invited to the, to the United Nations, U.S. House of Representatives, to Senate, and to the Pentagon twice. And then, but traveling, too, I met a beautiful woman, Judith Cobbin, Dr. Judith Cobbin. And, on our third date, on our third date, our last and final date, we got married. Anyway, that's a long story, but anyway, so brought me here. So I've been interested in healing, and I invite everybody to kind of like, let's wake up and be willing to tell the truth about things. It can change everything. Beaumont could be a city of light for the nation. I'm not kidding you at all. I'm a teacher. About 12 seconds. My teacher of truth and light and love. Amen. Thank you for allowing me to talk, and invite you to join Team Dean.
Thank you.
Oliver Rendell.
Good afternoon. My name is Olive, and I speak to the council as a grieving, concerned neighbor. What I grieve is not a death, but a loss of life nonetheless. At the young age of 25, Neri Jose Alvarado Borjes was stolen from his family and friends. Working at a bakery in Lewisville, Texas, Neri developed a reputation as a good friend and an even better brother, going so far as to tattoo the icon of autism awareness on his body, sporting his brother's name, Neri Elson, as a permanent symbol of his devotion to those closest to him. Neri had faith that through his hard work, he would achieve a life in this country better than anything he could have had in Venezuela. He believed in the American dream. It would be only nine months before that dream was crushed. On February 4th, Neri was detained by ICE officers. He had committed no crimes. The officers had no reason to suspect he had committed any crimes. He tried to show them his asylum papers with his court date. They did not care. They threw him into their vehicle and trafficked him to a detention center in Laredo, where they held him past his court date. There, he languished for over a week until he was finally able to meet with a judge. He was told he could either stay here in detention or fight his case for however many years that would take, or he could go back to Venezuela. Neri, sick of the U.S. immigration system, chose the latter, to go back to his old home where his family would be waiting for him. They would never see him again. The Borjes family would not know what happened to Neri until his name appeared in a list of victims forcibly removed to CICOT. On a whim, and without granting him his right to due process, ICE sentenced Neri, an innocent and loving baker from Lewisville, to life in a torture prison intended for terrorists. They accused him of affiliation with Tren de Aragua, citing only a tattoo as evidence, the autism awareness tattoo for his brother. To this day, Neri's family and former employer fight for his release, but their pleas are met with overwhelming apathy from a population that does not care about the evils it perpetuates upon innocent, working people. To everyone listening to this, I hope you can find the courage to stand up to this regime, because they will come for you next.
Thank you.
Robert Holland. Robert Holland. Charlie Crabbe.
Good afternoon, council. It's good to be back. And due to the snow and ice, I wasn't able to make it. Let's see. Good afternoon, Mayor West, council, Ms. Williams and staff. It, my name is Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive, 77706. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Summer temperatures are getting to Beaumont. Rain is in the forecast. The city has come through a very interesting election, and the mayor's position is in a runoff. Thank you to all the council, councilmen leaving. Thanks for your good service to the City of Beaumont. The police department is doing a great job, aided by the citywide camera system is paying off. It's terrible, the shooting and killing of our people. Something needs to be addressed to stop the killings. More cameras around apartments will help, and other strategic places in town. I think it's time for stopping frisk also. When the firefighters show up to your call, that is a very welcome sight. I would like to ask the firefighters' union to work with the city to improve our fire system. The City of Beaumont do appreciate the service of all the firefighters, but the city cannot support the cost of large pay benefits requests. This is due to the aging facility tax rule. Firefighters, please be reasonable on your wage and benefits requests. I do not think it's helpful to criticize the fire chief publicly. Speak to the city manager and state your grievance and work with the system to come to a conclusion. President Trump has us wondering about his tariffs with the world, tariff war with the world. Our oil and chemical system seems to be functioning, functioning in spite of it all, and hopefully the Middle East wars are winding down and the Ukrainians will find a peace plan with Putin. To everyone, have a nice week, and thanks for listening. I was gonna ask for my recovery of my time that I've missed, but I don't need it. Thank you. That's Bruce Allen.
You're welcome. Rose Rendell.
Good afternoon. My name is Rose, and I am speaking today as a neighbor in mourning. We are not here to mourn a death, but today, we still grieve the loss of a vibrant voice and rising star who was stolen from us at only 33. Born in Venezuela, Arturo Suarez Trejo migrated to Chile before entering the U.S. as a legal resident through the CBP One program. Gentle and creative, Arturo wrote tender ballads and yearning love songs in pursuit of a blossoming career. On February 8th, while filming a music video in North Carolina, Arturo and other men were kidnapped by an armed group, never to be seen again. While the gang responsible has not been forthcoming, Arturo was most likely targeted because of his nationality. He leaves behind his wife Natalie, a one-year-old daughter, his brother Nelson, and countless other friends, family, and fans. And I mourn him. Arturo's story is not isolated. What happened to him echoes terrifyingly in our own streets. On April 24th, multiple people disappeared from the 16th Street area in Orange. Another was abducted near Round Bunch in Bridge City. The next day, a man was taken to Beaumont. That weekend, another Beaumont man was stolen off the streets, leaving behind a distraught wife and son. I mourn them all, too. These kidnappings go on and on and on, our neighbors disappearing from our streets. I mourn all of them with a grief beyond capacity. People who stand up to these thugs are targeted for persecution. Neighbors are terrorized if they defend each other. So I won't name the affected in order to protect them and their families from further violence, but I will name those responsible. violence, but I will name those responsible. Arturo Suarez Trejo was taken by our own country's immigration enforcement officers. He committed no crimes in any country and entered the US legally. He could have been sent home, but was instead incarcerated in a foreign prison known for its crimes against humanity as part of a $6 million deal to house immigrants imprisoned by the US. This was senseless cruelty. Members of our own community temporarily detained here in Texas may face this too. Their legal status or innocence won't matter since nobody is being given due process to prove either. That also means nothing can stop this regime from targeting any of us. If they aren't stopped, they'll eventually come for anyone they dislike. And so we cannot allow this to go on. On the Statue of Liberty, it is said, given your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, tempest tossed to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. The people of Beaumont must stand up for our neighbors regardless of party or politics. We must have the courage to stand as a united community for what is right. It is our duty as Americans and our moral responsibility as humans to choose justice and compassion over silence and complicity.
Thank you.
Moretta Lowe.
Good afternoon. Well, Madalow, 5925, Medley Road. Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I stand before you today with deep concern regarding Article 6.10 of the city's code governing gaming sites and gaming machines. Specifically, I urge you to maintain, if not strengthen, the current restrictions on gaming machines in convenience stores. Any more, to any move to loosen those regulations risks opening the door to an influx of convenience store-based gaming sites disproportionately affecting our working-class neighborhoods. Studies and real-world examples have shown that these machines often target vulnerable individuals, particularly those struggling financially. Gaming addiction is a documented issue and the presence of easily accessible machines encourage impulsive repeated play, leading to economic hardships for many families. This is not just a matter of personal responsibility. It is a systemic issue that preys on those least equipped to absorb the financial loss. Beyond the economic impact, we cannot ignore the public safety concerns associated with gaming machine proliferation. Cities that have allowed widespread placement of these machines have seen an increase in crime rates from petty theft to organized criminal activity. More gaming sites mean more cash flow through the convenience stores at all hours, drawing the attention of criminal elements and placing both patrons and business owners at greater risk. The surrounding areas also tend to suffer from higher crime rates and economic decline as a legitimate business struggle to compete against establishment that profit from gaming revenue rather than from retail commerce. As city leaders, you have the duty to ensure that our neighborhoods remain safe, secure and economically viable. We cannot afford to let short-term revenue gains dictate long-term community consequences. I urge you to uphold the integrity of our city's code and prioritize the well-being of Beaumont residents over the expansion of gaming machine accessibility. I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to make public comments that did not sign up to speak? I have no one else, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. At this point, with public comments being closed, we're moving into the consent agenda. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Mayor, I would ask that item C be excluded for the purpose of recusal.
I'll move to approve minus C.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda excluding item C. Is there any discussion? Yes. Councilman Turner.
For clarity, since item C is excluded, will we be able to have discussion on it separately when we vote for it? Just want clarity before I vote.
That's traditionally been the practice, yes?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. And now consent agenda, item C.
Move to approve.
Read it first.
Okay. Item C. Council consider resolution approving a three-year contract for litter removal service for city rights away in specified areas. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second for approval of item C on the consent agenda. Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, as someone within staff, just for efficiency purposes, how does this contract kind of work and what department oversees it and how do we kind of monitor?
So Mr. McGrath, is that your territory in purchasing? Could be both.
So this is a new contract that the Parks Department is just going to take over. In the past, it was with code enforcement. So basically, the contract with WorkQuest, they have two teams that go out or two crews that go out each day, five days a week and clean up for the city. So now that it is coming out department, we're going to start monitoring that contract a little bit better so we can have a better outcome what's going on out there. The contract has come before you again because they were asking for a 6% increase and I asked them to lower it down to a 4% increase and they agreed to do 4%.
Yes, sir. That was the reason I asked because I see, you know, it kind of changed directions. I just wanted to know, were we just doing it for efficiency purposes or what was the difference? And I just wanted to explain it to the community. So I appreciate you.
All right. Also, one reason why we also brought it into the Parks Department is because, you know, we mow all the right-of-ways in the city. So that way we can line up with them to go out before we go to mow so they can pick up the litter.
Yeah, I think it just makes more sense that it's within the departments that's doing the work so it's more efficiency. I appreciate y'all working together and making that decision. Thank y'all.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilman Geth.
Kenneth, one more. We've been contracting with this, this group for 25 years. Are you satisfied with their work?
We can do a better job with it. And hopefully by moving inside of the Parks Department, we can stay on top of it so we can work as a team and things will, I think we'll have a better outcome now.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll let you walk away this time. No other discussions, all in favor of approving consent agenda, item C, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is, one abstention. So the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council to approve resolution awarding hotel occupancy tax grant for fiscal year 26 funding. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There is a motion in a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
Yeah. Mr. Manager, one thing I'd just like to see is, and I think person over that department, Mrs. Prince has been doing a great job, but I'd just like to see a little bit more outreach to kind of target the programs to deal with our, our kids a little bit more that may not get the opportunity to apply. And we can kind of come with a strategic plan to do so in the future.
Councilman Turner, this is actually in CBB. So the director will be Freddie Willard.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's two different parts of money.
So you're referring to the housing, Ms. Prince is over housing.
Yeah, CDBG. Okay. I'm on the wrong funding. Well, I apologize.
That's okay.
But I can tell you, I did sit on, I do sit on this committee to make recommendations and there was a, a focus on programs that do focus either young people or youth in arts. If you notice that the dance one was contributed to arts. Muir Fest is one that deals with families. So there was a focus on those that connected to the holisticness of the community.
Yeah, I remember a tech conference for our youth as well. So that, those are some of the things I was looking at.
So if you look at the, the application requirements and Ms. Freddie, you want to jump in at any time. But if you look at the application requirements, that doesn't not, that did not hit the target marks. We look at what, what's going to bring in like arts in that matter, but also heads and bids type things. But there is a very strict criteria to receive those funds. And although we, we did agree that that would be a great conference for the area, it did not meet the criteria.
Fair enough.
Questions?
Nah, I was on the wrong pot. So you're doing a great job, Ms. Freddie. Ms. Jess, you're doing a great job as well, but I just, you know, I'm always X.
And Mayor, if I could add just this quick comment to that, there were some applications that were essentially new programs. And I think the discussion in the committee was that they might be considered for future once they were more established. So.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of bottom number two?
Council consider approving a resolution adopting the preliminary consolidated budget for the 2025 annual action plan. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council to consider amended and ordinance containing the master fee schedule. It comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution. Other amended ordinance, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion?
Request more.
Councilman Neal, then Councilman Turner.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, what's driving these changes?
I can answer that. So when we originally adopted, there's, there's three items here. So when we originally adopted the master fee schedule, there was a clerical error where right now our master fee schedule is showing the fine range to be less than $50 and more than $1,000. And that needs to be considered in between 50 and 1,000. So that's just correcting that clerical error. It was also noticed that the ETJ release fee was not added to the master fee. That was something that was presented to you guys in the last budget meeting. I didn't hear any objection or anything to it, so I'm including it in there. And then the third one is a new fee. So there's the preliminary plat renewal with approved construction drawings fee that I would like to propose. Right now, our preliminary plat, which is a new subdivision to the city of Beaumont, that's how it begins. It assesses a fee and then once it's approved by planning commission, it has to get construction drawings done. That takes time in that, that process. And in our ordinances right now, preliminary plats expire within 24 months. A lot of times these developers are in process of, in process of building these subdivisions and their plat just expires. So I, I would rather not have them assess the entire fee because when they come back for a preliminary plat renewal, typically it's a less intense review because it's more so bringing it back for reapproval to align with the ordinances. So instead of making them pay the full price of the preliminary, the initial preliminary plat, I would only assess a $500 fee or like to assess a $500 fee, not to, to charge more money to the developer, but to work with them a little bit more or a little bit better.
Councilman Turner.
Yeah, that was my question, clarity of why, you know, this agenda item was on there. So thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider a request for a rezoning from general commercial multiple-family dwelling district to residential single-family dwelling district for the southern 2.43 acres of the residual 21.10 acre tract to the north and west of the existing Dillon Drive. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number four? Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow commercial warehouse and office park in a general commercial multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 1120 Wendell and Drive with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and our fog program. Two, construction shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. And three, the development shall comply with section 28 dot 06 dot 006 landscaping and screening requirements of the city of Beaumont Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve with conditions.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first public hearing?
Council to conduct a public hearing to hear nonprofit, nonprofit applicant request for funding from the 2025 Community Development Block Grant.
I open the public hearing. Who do we have up?
Johnny Stewart, 3550 Fannin Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. Yeah, you go ahead. Got to take these out so I can read. Hello, everyone. I'm Mayor West and the city council members and our nonprofit partners. My name is Johnny Stewart and I'm the director for the Batteries Intervention and Prevention Program with Family Services. I know that many of you have heard about Family Services, but I had the privilege of being with Family Services for over 22 years. And I've had firsthand knowledge of the organization and the growth and adapted, you know, how it adapted and remain committed to meeting the evolving needs of our community, all while staying true to our mission. And I would like to tell you about our mission. The mission is to strengthen and empower families, individuals, communities through accessible counseling services, shelter, education and advocacy. Many of you are familiar with Family Services and our shelter, but let me give you a brief update. Like many organizations, we've faced significant challenges throughout the years. Yet throughout all the, this time, we've remained resilient, continue to provide Yet throughout all the, this time, we've remained resilient, continue to provide comprehensive and wraparound services to survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and their families. We are proud to be the only, I'll say that again, the only shelter within 89 miles of radius. We offer emergency shelter services, and we've recently reached a major milestone. We've began construction of a new shelter. The old shelter, the current shelter we have, held 64 beds. The new one will hold 144 beds. We're very proud of that. We're proud to, like I said, we're the only one in the, in this 89 mile radius to provide those services. In 2023 alone, we've received more than 100 calls requesting shelter assistance that we were unable to meet due to the limited capacity. According to the Texas Council on Family Violence, nearly 30% of the shelters around the state, across the state, has undergone the same issue with no capacity due to, you know, restrict the limited amount of spaces. Our new shelter, like I said, we're moving from 64 beds to 144 beds, expanding, expanding our ability to respond and provide a safe haven when it is needed most. So here is the, our favorite part. We're requesting $25,000 to help cover the cost of our new shelter, and all that information will be inside your folders, and we invite all of y'all to attend the grand opening of our new shelter in June or July. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think this is, is it Latite Buxey? 700 North Street, Suite Q, Beaumont, Texas. The organization is Janaya's Love.
Good afternoon.
My name is Latite Buxey. I'm the founder and CEO of Janaya's Love Sicker Cell Foundation. Janaya's Love is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization formed in 2015. Janaya's Love joined following the death of my granddaughter, Janaya LaDee, who was born with sickle cell anemia. Janaya was a twin, and she would have been graduating from high school in May of 2025. Janaya became ill with a stomach ache and was taken to the hospital complaining of breathing, complaining and breathing shallow. The doctor was not in at the time. The staff decided not to bother him. Janaya's condition worsened during the night and became critical. She was not given treatment, and she was life flighted to another hospital where she died. I am giving you these facts to let you know about sickle cell. People, I started the foundation to spread awareness, comfort, education, in order to prevent untimely deaths. My granddaughter was like a fish taken out of water. Timing is everything with a sickle cell patient. My goal is to form a sickle cell wellness center in order to provide the patients and families with guidance and assistance to uphold in their life. Sickle cell, sickle cell is a genetic blood disorder where the red blood cells become sickle-shaped, leading to complications like anemia, pain episodes, and organ failure. Janaya's, Janaya died of splenatic sequestration, where the spleen sucked up all the oxygen. Her body broke down in the middle of the night. Her parents were young and watched her die, basically, because she was urinating on herself and couldn't control her body functions. Sickle cell is very critical, and a lot needs to be done for sickle cell, and it's like one of the diseases that is left behind. So I'm here to ask for help with my foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, excuse me, Sharon Begnaud, 2715 Calder, Beaumont, Texas, The Giving Field.
Thank you all for having me here today. I'm here representing The Giving Field. We are a one-acre organic garden here in Beaumont. Everything that we harvest, we send to area soup kitchens to feed the hungry. Our community has come around this project for 13 years. We started it back in 2012. It's amazing what the people of Beaumont have done to help the people in our community that really need help. As was mentioned before in the announcements, you know, our food insecurity rates here in Beaumont are very, very high. Everything that we do at The Giving Field helps to lessen the burden on people who are looking for food and who are hungry. So our community has come around in the last 13 years and provided over 85,000 pounds of food to the agencies in our community. Currently, we are sending food to some other place, Market to Hope, and nutrition and services for seniors here in Beaumont. They take everything that we give them, because a lot of them do not have the budgets to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables. So we kind of fill in that gap. I wrote the grant for the CDBG to expand our Feeding the Hungry through the use of a kitchen classroom. So what we want to do is we want to be able to teach young and old how to cook. We've kind of fallen away from that. We have a lot of families in our community where both parents are working, and for convenience sake, these families are doing the best they can, but they're serving their families processed unhealthy food. We feel like with some basic cooking skills, children can help contribute to a healthier meal and a healthier lifestyle in their household through the education that we would provide through this kitchen classroom. It would be available through all of the Beaumont Independent School Districts and the Golden Triangle as well. So it's the coming together of education of young and old. We'll have adult cooking classes as well, but we will also utilize those hands to help create reheat and eat meals, like we get at the HEB grocery store, to provide for the agencies that we currently serve. They do not have those meals available for those clients. So it would be a twofold. It would be an increased outreach in helping the people in our community to feed the hungry, and then it would also be an increased education component to what we're currently doing to help create a healthier Beaumont. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Vivian Baloo, 3030 Plaza Circle, Port Arthur, Texas.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vivian Baloo, and I'm the Executive Director of Legacy CDC. Legacy is a nonprofit organization that has served Beaumont for 15 years. We are officed at 700 North Street, Suite D. We are the only active Housing HUD certified counseling agency in southeast Texas. Over the last 15 years, we have provided financial counseling and home buyer certification for over 2,500 families. This service is required by the city's home program. We also provide social services spanning from homeless prevention, rental assistance, and rehab assistance to seniors. We recently completed the renovation of 90 homes in Jefferson County for seniors. Today, we are seeking CDBG funding to help offset the cost of operating a local office. The cost that we are requesting is $20,000. It's about 25% of our total cost for that office. We appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Daniel Jeans, 2509 Cable Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, The House Center.
Daniel Jeans, Director of the HOW Center. This is Carrie Lavelle. She's the Administrator. We really appreciate all of you serving the city and helping the House Center for the last 33 years. The CDBG funding that we're looking for right now is to complete a project to ADA compliant housing for a ramp, and we have about 20% of our residents are seniors on disability or low income, and we utilize them, they're long-term residents. We utilize them for newer people coming in to mentor them, and that's what we're going to use the fund for. I'm also going to share just a little bit of updates of what we got going on. Last year, we did start a mentoring program with some young men in the neighborhood. We had a couple of them struggling with some math and some sciences. We took them under our wing, and both of them are on ABY honor roll this year. We're very proud of that. We gave them just a little bit of an incentive to get going, and it's joy to see the guys interact with the young men in the neighborhood. We've also, somebody had mentioned cameras throughout the city. We've updated a bunch of live cameras around the neighborhood. All the neighbors know about them. All the neighbors appreciate them. We also have different things for the neighbors. They know in case of a crisis, they can come to us. We have helped them out before, and we're going to help them out again. And last but not least, the founder, Owens DeVillier, and his wife, Lottie, founded the House Center in 1992, and they had a vision of making a safe haven in the city of Beaumont. And we lost Ms. Lottie last year, and the alumni came together, and next year, in the fall, we will be awarding a scholarship in their honor from the House Center to, I'm not going to be on the committees, I don't need to be on the committee, but we have some people going to step up to be on the committee, try to help kids, preferably in the north end of Beaumont where we're located, going to Lamar University, somewhere to further their education, and we appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gwendolyn Lavelle, 2390 Dowland Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor West and City Council. Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Lavelle, and I'm the Medical Director at Gift of Life. And as you all know, we are a nonprofit, and our mission is to help men and women who are uninsured to be able to receive screening for cancers. And as you further know, that prostate cancer affects one in eight men in their lifetime, as well as breast cancer affect women, one in eight women in her lifetime. And because of this, we are so grateful to be able to stand before you and say thank you for the support that you have given to us. The Gift of Life is a nonprofit that has been around celebrating their 30th year last year, and we appreciate everything that you all do to support that. Last year, we saw 22 women that were diagnosed with breast cancer, and of the 22 women that we saw, nine of them were residents of Beaumont. I had an opportunity to speak with those women around Christmas time when we give gifts and just follow up to see how they're doing, how their treatment's gone, and what's going on with them. And I want you to know that those women express, express such gratitude for being able to be diagnosed and then referred and treated. And I know that we can all relate to the importance of that, because all of us know someone, some woman, with breast cancer, some man with prostate cancer. And so we just want to support, we want to support the application that we have for the grant for 2025 as well. And hopefully, you enjoyed our video presentation. In addition to that, last year, we were able to refer seven men to the urologist for prostate cancer, because they came with elevated PSAs, which is the screening test for prostate cancer. And of those seven men, two of those men are residents of Beaumont, and they are now undergoing what we call watchful waiting. They have not been diagnosed at this point, but they are being carefully followed, and the right time for biopsy will be chosen by the urologist. We just want you to know how very important it is that we continue to receive your support and how grateful we are. I think we all know that Texas is the capital of the uninsured citizen, and of course, Beaumont is reflecting that too, in the number of people that we see that are uninsured, and we're so grateful to be able to help in this manner to provide screening for them. Next, the men's health screening will begin in June, and in July, on the 19th, we will be here in Beaumont doing the screening, and we already have 109 men registered, so it's really important to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Williams, 4208 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Jonathan Williams, the founder and artistic director of the Jonathan Williams Center for the Performing Arts here in Beaumont. JWCPA is in its eighth year of hosting a summer performing arts camp. Through the years, we've trained over 370 youth here in Beaumont, as well as teens. In previous CDBG cycles, you've helped students like Navea Mahoney, who this past weekend was featured in a solo recital. She's planning to attend college in the fall. She's received a full-ride scholarship in the area of music. We're really proud of her accomplishment. This project will help us train many more students like Navea. It will also help us improve our technical training, and will provide a backdrop projector, which is in, which is the most important equipment in our technology area, and is available and essential to the student's overall technical training. It provides a great visual for our student productions. This is not the kind of equipment that most nonprofits can afford financially, yet it is essential to the training process. For example, in our science classes, we need equipment that will allow us to do effective training for each of the experiments that we have to conduct. If we only have the textbook, we aren't able to do effective training without our equipment. With that being said, this equipment will provide the hands-on learning portion of this training, equipping them with the skills needed to produce an end product that they and Beaumont will be proud of. Some of you have attended our student productions, and we hope that you've enjoyed them. If you have not, we want to invite you to come and attend the production on the 28th of June, if you will save that date. Beaumont has a lot of really talented students, and we are proud of our student artists and want to send them off well-trained. This grant will help us do just that. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Regina Rogers, number nine, Bell Chase Garden, Beaumont, Texas, IEA.
Thank you so much. It's good to be here today. Appreciate you all, and I am representing IEA Inspire and Encourage Achieve, our program that was started 28 years ago to help children in the juvenile justice system achieve dignity, respect, and hopefully, the ability to succeed in life. We're, we currently do not have an executive director, but Joe Evans is our Director of Juvenile Affairs, and he is here, right there. And so I, a lot of the information that I'm going to tell you about very briefly is information that we've been able to gather over the years, and particularly over the last few years since we've been working even more closely with the courts. Our request is for counseling to help rehabilitate these children. There are more behavioral health issues than ever before. I'm in the detention center weekly, and I see so many children who are helpless, hopeless, and filled with despair. Some of you have been there, some of you have seen it. We have a speaker series every Saturday, and most of the children are allowed to be out with us in congregating and hearing the speaker. More recently, in the last year or so, many of the children are kept in their cells. Why is that? Because their behavior has been terrible, or because they are suicidal? And it's very tragic to see that, particularly in children who are as young as 10 years old. I was there last Saturday. There were about eight children in the back, and I brought our speaker back to talk to them. them. And one of the children, a little boy, 13, was sitting at the table and he kept pushing it and he kept bumping and, and nobody really was paying attention to him. I was a psychology major before I went to law school, so I noticed those kinds of things. And I went over to him, I said, sweetheart, what's wrong? Are you okay? He said, you mean because I'm moving around a lot? He said, I have ADHD. And I said, really? And I said, do you take medication? No. Have you ever had medication? No. Have you ever seen a counselor talk about it? No. And I said, and I lied. And I said, well, I also have that problem and I've been on medication and it's helped me. He said, really? I said, yes, lied. But I wanted him to feel comfortable to talk about it. And I said, if I can get a counselor for you, will you listen and would you be receptive to taking medicine? He said, oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Well, that was the light in the darkness. And it, it is emotional for me because I leave that facility, the detention center named for my grandmother, and I cry on the way home. So you all know about it. This is counseling request and we are very, very grateful and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have Mayor.
All right, thank you. Counsel, have any questions? Yes, Councilman Durio.
Yes, I guess this is, I guess Chris.
Yes.
When will the people that apply, when will they receive notice of whether or not they were approved?
So we will bring this item back to council to approve the final vote and action plan in a few weeks, May 20th. So actually two weeks. And that's where council will be able to, to make a decision.
Okay. Do you know how many applicants do you have?
I'll let Jess Prince come up and.
We have 25 applicants this year. CDAC made the scoring recommendations back in March. And so when we bring it to you on the 20th of May, they will then be alerted via email the following week. They won't be awarded the funding with grant agreements until later in October due to our funding year with HUD and when we will have our grant agreement with them.
How much funding is available?
$200,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Councilman Turner.
All right, Ms. Prince, for people watching, can you kind of explain this process? I understand we have $200,000, over 25 people applied. Me personally, you know, we have some of these organizations doing such great work. I wish we had way more money, but.
You could always fund it from the general fund if you wish.
Nah, not the way some people have been talking during this election.
Right. So the way the process works, we get an annual entitlement from HUD. We are limited by HUD with how much we can give nonprofits. And so with our current policies and procedures, agencies are capped for $20,000 per agency. You have to be a nonprofit to be eligible. You have to meet the national objectives for the funding, which are set and regulated by HUD. When you do your application, you spell out, you know, the activities, the projects, the scope of work, and they have to directly impact low-income households within the city limits of Beaumont. The funding is a reimbursement grant, and so not all agencies ask for the full 20. They ask for what they can afford to pay for out of pocket first.
So I want to stop you right there because I think that's important because I've talked to new people who apply and a lot of people don't understand the process.
Right.
This is actually to, they would spend the money upfront and it would come back on the back end if approved. So I think that part is very important when people approaches and asks us how does this process work, that they understand upfront. And I'm glad you just stated that because I've answered, man, several emails and a lot of people on how this process works. I think that's important to know.
Our application is only open once annually because we only receive an entitlement annually. And so that application portal for nonprofits opens November 1st. It closes January 31st. So they have three full months to finish their application, which is very brief, to be honest. But the scoring happens in March. And before they apply, in every October, when we are doing grant agreements, I host two in-person orientation meetings that I welcome anyone to attend. There's a video of that orientation on our website all the time that anyone can watch if they have questions about the process or if they're not sure if they have the capacity to apply, and they can always call us as well.
And just one more interesting point. I remember when I first got on council, we didn't have nearly as many nonprofits applying or almost double the amount of nonprofits applying. So I just urge people that are coming onto the council to understand it's great work going on in this community and we got to figure out better ways to make sure we take care of the people doing this wonderful work for the people in our community.
Yes, and the application process used to be only accepted, the applications were only accepted in person on Valentine's Day until 2:00 PM. And so when we extended our program and when we went virtual and digital with all of our processes, that of course made it more accessible and that's part of why we have more applicants, but the need is also greater.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Is anybody else? All right.
You need to close the public hearing, Mayor, please.
Yes, we're going to close the public hearing and if we can open the second one.
Counsel, to conduct the public hearing, to consider finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property owned by Kevin Don Cobal at 7050 Donna Lane with the legal description of Willen Acres, Lot 3, Block 8, and order the owners to abate public health nuisances within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting City Council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of City Council action.
The public hearing is now open.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is to give you the history of 7050 Donna Street. It started back in February of 2020. Property was in violation for failure to retrieve lit about code enforcement. Property was declared a public health nuisance by City Council in May of 22. And then on 7/19 or 23, a contractor went out and cleaned the property at the city's expense and you can see the cost was $3,900 back in '23. And so in December of that year, the property was out of compliance once again. So you can see the history of this particular property and the pictures you're getting ready to see, the property was re-inspected on April 24th of 2025. So we can go just let them see the pictures. Questions?
Councilman Durio.
So Mr. Coleman, do you guys, your department, do y'all just, how do y'all come about these? Do you ride around until you find one? Are you dependent on citizens to call in or?
Well, actually, we get the referral from code enforcement. Code enforcement, they go out and they survey the community, but a lot of times neighbors would call and report. And so once it comes to us, because of what you see, again, that becomes a public health hazard with rodent harborage and containers that contain water for mosquito breeding, which mosquitoes cause West Nile virus, rodent droppings, carried a hunter virus, which is dangerous and deadly to citizens. So it becomes a public health hazard. So that's when we get involved and, and then once we get involved, we reach out to the property owner. We send them a letter and from that letter, they have 10 days to either clean the property or make significant progress. And then after that, we go out and do another site review after the 10 days. And if it's still out of compliance, then we send another letter letting them know the date they have to, if they so choose, to come before council. So by the time it get to you guys now that council is held every two weeks as opposed to weekly, that person may have close to a month to either make significant progress or bring the property into compliance before it gets to you. And now that it's to you, if you choose to declare it a public health nuisance, then the property owner gets another 10 days to break it into compliance before the city is allowed to go in and have it cleaned. So you're looking at roughly 40 days before any action is taken.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Phil Shaw.
Mr. Coleman, I know we have budget season coming up and unfortunate, we even have the budget for things like this, but can you speak to, you know, how much of an issue it can be if we don't go address this when some of these neighbors consistently kind of call these things in, like how bad it can put the community, just the danger it could put?
It's, yeah, it causes a lot of issues and I just think it's unfair for anyone in the neighborhood to have to live around this, right? It's unfortunate. It's, it's a, it's a myriad of problems as to how a property owner let their problem, their property get this bad. So it's just not an easy solution. The common denominator in a lot of these properties, they are seniors, they live alone. Some, we have referred to adult protective services. There are some mental issues there. So it's a whole host of things. It's the way I view it is a, is a system failure. And so we've, as you can see, this property was cleaned in '23 and I'm back before you again in '24 and the property is back out of compliance. So this is a real current thing that we see with all these properties that we bring before you, we'll have it cleaned and six months later, it might be, I might be standing before you once again. And, and so it could be costly to the city if the city have to continue to go in and clean the properties.
I know, Madam Attorney, you explained this several times, but just the process of, once we spend this money, next steps for the city to get it back, you know, just for people who may not understand, I want to make sure they do.
So the first thing is that we would have to go to court to get permission to enter the property from a judge. In our court order, we typically ask that the court award us money not exceed what we have quoted the property cleanup to be. So in 2023, you saw that the property cleanup was $3,900. And so if we would have received a quote for, we asked them to be, to give a very generous quote, but let's just say that the quote was under, which to my knowledge, that has never happened. But let's just say that the quote was under. So the quote would have been, let's say, $3,500. Our order would have asked the judge to allow us to recruit funds not exceed $3,500 because that's what we were quoted. And so the city would essentially be at a loss for the additional four. But we would essentially put a lien on the property. We would, it goes through our collections process where they send out invoices. If individuals decide to make payments, then they'll make regular payments. If they ignore the invoices, then we would, like any other debt owed to the city, put a lien on the property pursuant to the court order.
Thank you.
Councilman Phil Shaw.
Two questions, Mr. Coleman. This, this picture implies that this part of his property is behind a privacy fence. I'm just, it may or may not be, but just curious, is some of this visible from the street? I mean, this is, so the neighbors are having to see this on a regular basis? Okay. Second question, you mentioned that there's, at times there's mental health issues and I'm assuming are other agencies brought in when that determination is made or we suspect that?
We, a lot of times, we reach out to adult protective services to come in and they come in and do their assessment. And, and then sometimes through their assessment, they make the recommendation that the person can live alone. So it becomes very challenging. It really does because again, you know, we'll be back before you again, you know?
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else, Councilman Gibbs?
Unfortunately, these situations are not limited to any part of town. We recently had a very similar situation over on Armstrong in the west end of Beaumont that did end up resulting in having to go to court. And of course, that takes our legal staff's time. Trey, your department did a very good job in that hearing. And the judge ultimately, you know, expressed his frustration with the property owner and made it very clear that he did not want to have to incarcerate him for being in contempt of court, but that a court order has to be able to be enforced and made it very clear to the property owner that he would enforce it by contempt, which could result in incarceration. In that case, the property owner did clean it up. I don't know if it stayed clean, but he did clean it up. But it was so much effort that had to go into that case. And it wasn't the first time, just like here, with the city had to go out and hire a contractor and spend money. I think in that case, it was closer to $6,000. It's very, very frustrating to the neighbors. I know in that case, one of the neighbors sold their house because they just couldn't take it anymore. It diminishes the value of all the surrounding properties. It's, as you say, even if it's behind a fence, it doesn't diminish the rodent problem and the infestation that can occur. So yeah, sometimes you just gotta show tough love.
And again, we, when I say we, speaking of code enforcement and public health, we appreciate you guys' support because as you can see with just this one property, you know, we've been dealing with this one property for five years. And so you only can imagine the, the man hours that, that has to be put into dealing with these properties. So again, we appreciate you guys' support.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Gibbs.
I will add that there is a segment of the community that say, hey, it's my property. I ought to be able to do anything I want to do. And I've heard that argument. You know, when you decide to live within the city, you enter into a social compact in which you agree to live by the rules established by this body, our city ordinances. If you want to do anything you want to do, you can go live out in the county. You don't bring this kind of attitude into the city and it's, it's sad that some feel like they can and should be able to be entitled to do just anything they want to do on their property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anybody else on this? Anybody sign up?
No, sir.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, would we, can we please have the reading of item number six?
Counsel, to consider an ordinance finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on a property owned by Kevin Don Cobal at 7050 Donna Lane with the legal description of Willen Acres, Lot 3, Block 8, and order the owners to abate public nuisances, health nuisances within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting City Council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of City Council action. And staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the work session?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to review and discuss Article Six, gaming sites and gaming machines of the city's code of ordinance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to discuss Article Six of the city's codes of ordinances, which pertain to game rooms, gaming machines, and future options that council could consider moving forward. I would like to provide a clarification regarding certain gaming machines commonly known as eight liners. Texas law permits bona fide amusement machines to award non-cash prizes or merchandise valued at less than $5, which is known as the fuzzy animal exception. The caveat is that those machines shall not render cash, gift cards, gift certificates, or prizes valuing over $5. Regulations over amusement redemption machines do not include types of machines that award prizes directly such as claw, crane, or similar devices. Additionally, this includes machines that rely on users' physical skills such as rolling, flipping, tossing, or dropping a ball or an object into a target area to receive a prize. These are typically designed for children's entertainment, so think Chuck E. Cheese, Main Event, venues like that, arcades. The City of Beaumont's gaming ordinance establishes comprehensive operational zoning and licensing regulations for all gaming establishments. These businesses are authorized to operate between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. To ensure public safety and emergency response readiness, gaming establishments must display visible signage for first responders and all doors must remain unlocked during operational hours. A functional security camera system is required at all times and background checks are mandatory for all owners and operators. Owners and operators must also wear ID badges at all times while on the premises. Zoning restrictions further regulate the zone, or the location of gaming establishments. Game rooms are permitted by right only in heavy industrial zoning districts. Conditional approval through the issuance of specific use permits is required for locations within the general commercial, light industrial, planned unit development, and commercial manufacturing zoning districts. Additionally, gaming establishments must not be located within 600 feet of any school, childcare facility, church, hospital, or residential zoning district, and must maintain a minimum distance of 1,000 feet from any existing game room. Under this ordinance, a game room is defined as a location containing six or more gaming machines, whereas accessory gaming refers to establishments with five or fewer machines. Game rooms and gaming sites that were legally established before September 26, 2023, which is when y'all adopted the amended ordinance, are considered grandfathered at their existing location and may continue operations under their existing annual permit. However, if a permit is revoked, suspended, or allowed to lapse, the grandfathered status is forfeited and the location is treated as a new gaming site, which is subject to current zoning, distancing, and permitting requirements. Permits for gaming establishments must be renewed annually and require proof of valid machine decals, which are issued by the state comptroller's office. As of now, the City of Beaumont has 66 permitted gaming sites, operating a total of 453 gaming machines. These regulations are intended to ensure public safety and land use compatibility.
Question, Demi.
Yes, sir.
The 66 gaming sites, does that mean 66 game rooms or does that include the corner convenience stores with?
Sites in total. Like, so it would be accessory gaming and whatnot. And then 453 machines legally permitted through the City of Beaumont, which also includes the decals from the state comptroller's office. So for this, I'll pass off to our city attorney to talk about the most recent case.
So I think it's important to start out with the fact that the City of Fort Worth is, Riley, sorry, was not initially sought out to ban game rooms. This was a zoning case. The owners of game rooms in Fort Worth essentially challenged the Fort Worth ordinance that put forth greater restrictions in, in their area to kind of permit their game room machines. What they essentially wanted to do is something that the City of Beaumont is already doing, is restrict where they can go. Right now, and Demi, you jump in with this, if you have an existing business and it's in an area that allows for game rooms, you don't have to go before planning and zoning. It's considered an accessory use and if it's allowed in our permitted uses table, you can have one. If you are operating outside of that, if you want to open up a game room, you have to seek a specific use permit.
So accessory gaming machines, because it's accessory, so you know how I listed the zoning districts, there's G, CMD, planned unit development, and so on. Some of those require specific use permits for game rooms, which is six machines or more. If it is an accessory gaming, which is five machines or less, then because it's accessory and it's not the main use of the business, then it's allowed by right at that location as long as it's within a zoning district that allows for it.
So in our adopted ordinance, we're already doing some of the things that Fort Worth was seeking to do. When we amended our ordinance, we essentially, with, with the exception of a few items, aligned our ordinance to kind of match up with some of our sexually oriented business ordinance, restricting their distance from schools, restricting their distance from, from parks, so on and so forth. The only thing we, we kind of didn't touch in our ordinance was probably alcohol, so if they had some other things, fine. But it is allowed, or game rooms are allowed and probably are less restricted than we are for sexually oriented businesses, but we'll discuss that later. So essentially, when we amended our ordinance, that's what we were looking to do. We wanted to, we increased enforcement and we increased restrictions and we, we put that out. The, the lawsuit that went forward for Riley was essentially trying to do that and the game room said, hey, you can't do that because we're essentially a Chuck E. Cheese. We are a, a game of skill and not by chance. And so when, when they filed that lawsuit essentially challenging the ordinance that Fort Worth was putting out, initially, the courts were like, hmm, this is kind of police power and, and, and they didn't really make a decision and then both parties took it up on appeal. And what they were appealing initially was whether or not the, the ordinance was preemptive based on the Texas occupation in alcoholic beverage code. That was the initial for that. And then whether or not there was some other substantive law, essentially the comptroller permitting them, that overruled that. When it got to, up to the Texas Supreme Court initially on appeal, it's when the Texas Supreme Court remanded it back down to the appeals court to say, you need to make a decision on whether or not these are basically fuzzy animal exception, is this a Chuck E. Cheese? Is this a game of skill or is this a game of chance? And Fort Worth, up their Court of Appeals, basically determined that it was in fact a game of chance and did not allot for, for the, for the exception and thus therefore unconstitutional. And so the Supreme Court, based on that, did not allow them to come back. They, the parties petitioned for a, a rehearing and they also petitioned for a review. That final review was denied in December of, of this year, 2025. So, I'm sorry, of last year. So the, the issues that we, that we have or that, or that are before us, rather is, what does that leave us? The comptroller of the state has not issued a mandated ban across the board, but the, this particular case does allow for cities, and the City of Fort Worth being one, and the City of Orange a second, to kind of not allow them altogether. They have deemed them to be unconstitutional machines and not to meet the protection, but the state comptroller is still issuing permits, which means they are still allowing them to exist in Texas. And the city has an opportunity until you go to the next slide to decide like how they want to approach it. So back to Demi on, essentially, we've kind of touched on the history a little bit already as it relates to kind of what we did with our initial adoption in 2014 and then our subsequent adoption in 2023. But I guess council has the option to kind of determine if you wanted to make the, because now, now there's a case that supports it, to say, do you want to have it more restrictive? Which in that case would be aligning it more closely with our sexually oriented businesses in terms of where they can be located. Again, jump right in anytime.
Sorry. So there's three options. You can ban outright. There's some cities that are doing that right now, Fort Worth, Klute, White Oak, and then I believe that Orange is in the process of considering it. Or you can amend the permitted use table to only allow gaming sites within industrial zoning districts. So in my mind, that'd be heavy industrial, light industrial, and commercial manufacturing rather than allowing them in the general commercial zoning districts, which would align more with our sexually oriented business practices now as far as zoning regulations. Or the third is no change and we continue with our enforcement measures. Our ordinance is strong that, that we have in place, but you can always strengthen it more or you can ban outright. So I think.
So in, in line with that second option, if, if council did want to amend the permitted use, one that would go to planning and zoning for review and they would make a recommendation and that would come back to council. The other thing to consider is that it would grandfather in existing, existing game rooms until their permit either laps, they sold the business, or their permit was revoked. And so those existing game rooms that were outside of, are currently located in an area where they would otherwise not be allowed to be located once the table was amended, would be allowed to continue operations until such time as they were no longer eligible.
Question. So I'm trying to reconcile the Supreme Court refusing to overturn the appellate court's determination that these machines are unconstitutional with your statement that our state comptroller is still issuing permits for these gaming machines. Mr. Hager, like all of us, took an oath to uphold and defend the laws of the state of Texas and it is now the law of the state of Texas that these machines are unconstitutional.
We have not received any direction from the state comptroller as to if, when, or how they're going to implement it, but what we know is they're still collecting taxes for them and they're still allowing for permitting. Part of our ordinance is we won't issue a permit for them until they have shown us proof that they've been approved in state comptroller. And so in order for them to even apply and, and receive permitting for the city, they have to show us proof of that and we have to confirm proof of that. And so one option would be is to follow the state's lead on this. And this to see if the state continues to permit and if the state continues to operate that way, I think that that gives the city greater protection to say, you know, the state, because our ordinance says we're not going to give you a permit if you don't have one from the state. And so someone comes in our office and they have one from the state, it's, you know, well, the state of Texas, that's fine. So it's, it is, it is a, it's a conflict right now. We've got no direction from state comptroller as to when they're going to be updating their procedures. Obviously, they're aware of it, but when they, they, they deem to update their procedures on whether or not they're going to stop permitting, whether or not they're just going to allow it to lapse in, in terms of like not issue any more permits this year, but, but what we know that they have and still are issuing permits, that's all we could kind of get out of them is that they have not stopped issuing permits.
Well, respectfully, at some point, this is going to go back to the Supreme Court because one of these, some city is going to request an injunction against Mr. Hager from issuing any more permits based on the previous finding that these machines are unconstitutional.
I would prefer it not be Beaumont.
Well, I understand that. And of course, this always does seem to come down to money and if we were to tell all of these current gaming sites that, you know, you're done, we're going to shut you down, it's going to cost us some money. And we heard from an attorney today that made an appeal to at least let the sites that have five or fewer remain in operation because he tried to portray an argument that, you know, we need that money to continue to exist as a local, local business. But it's either unconstitutional or it's not, and whether it's five or fewer or it's gaming room, you either are going to allow the machines to continue to be in your city or not. I for one, don't think they should be. I think you can ask any police officer that has any experience in dealing with these locations as to what kind of problems they occur or that they cause. And I, I don't see them as offering value to our city. So that's just where I'm coming from.
So in, in 2003, one of the reasons for increasing or strengthening our ordinance was to combat some of the problems that we had with enforcement. So I think that there was some statistics presented even when we adopted the ordinance in 2014. We came forth, you know, it was a joint presentation between my office and the police department at that time to kind of put forth an ordinance because at that time, they were just kind of unregulated and everywhere and operating just kind of in the wild. And we put forth an ordinance to the council at that time. And then, you know, after some evaluation and some time, we realized that we were operating at a loss to kind of enforce that ordinance and we came back to council in 2023 and said, look, this is how many we have operating, this is the cost for the details, this is the cost of the time it takes for our police and, and code enforcement. And I think it was like a team at the time, it was fire, the fire marshal's office, PD, code enforcement, all these, all these different departments and divisions coming together to kind of, to inspect and operate these game rooms, this is how much it costs. So the current ordinance is essentially in the fees associated with the current ordinance or to, or for enforcement. If obviously we decided to ban, we would still need money to kind of enforce the ban. And so the council would have to consider how we wanted to allot money to enforce the ban. Obviously, we could, the current ordinance does allow for fines for individuals who are operating without a permit. We could, you know, keep that portion of the ordinance to allow for fines for individuals who are operating without a permit, but we would still need an enforcement arm. So we would still need money to cover the cost for overtime for that division that goes out to, to essentially raid illegal game rooms. So that money would need to come from somewhere.
Councilman Phil Shaw, then Councilman Durio.
Yeah, I don't know if you or someone else on staff can answer this question, but as Ms. Low had mentioned, it appears that these gaming rooms prey on the economic disadvantaged and there seems to be crime that swirls around these locations. But the fuzzy animal issue, I, I don't frequent these establishments. I don't, I'm not a gamer, so I, I can't, I don't, can't speak to it. But I've been told that you win a $2 fuzzy animal and then they'll buy it back from you for 20 bucks. So there's a loophole to exchange cash. Do we, do we have any evidence of that happening?
So the fuzzy, before Demi jumped in, the fuzzy animal exception is essentially a court termed award in that it was kind of intended to kind of distinguish between a skilled game and a, a game of chance. So when you think about a game of chance, you simply think of a casino where you get money and you think about a game of skill for children, you think about winning a teddy bear. So almost like the state bear, when you go with your boyfriend and he makes the basket, you get a big bear. In my case, my dad. But for, for most people, like that's, that's, and that's what they came up with that is that when, when you win a game of, of skill, you get the, you get the teddy bear. When you win a game of chance, you get money.
Well, then I'll rephrase the question. I've been told that there's a loophole where they work around prizes that you get if you win so much at the game and then they buy it back from you. So there's a loophole to get cash in your hand. Do we have any evidence of that?
That would probably be, be more under police.
So not to speak for them, but there are, and some of their inspections have determined that they, that some of the prizes have dust on them, which indicates that no one is winning these prizes, or at least that these prizes are not being distributed. The act of gambling is essentially a, a separate part of the enforcement. So there, there are individuals who work in the police department that kind of go undercover or send in CIs to determine whether or not there's illegal activity. And there have been some game, some gambling or illegal gambling cases made based on that. I can't tell you how many of them are active, but if you do have a gambling charge filed against you, your permit is revoked and anyone listed as either owner, operator, manager, or anyone connected to that application is prohibited from filing, I think it's for one year, from filing an application to receive and operate a game room in the city.
So then I'll take that.
And it's viewed as a new gaming site. So it would fall under the new distancing requirements, zoning regulations and those things. So whereas before in 2014, you could be 300 feet away from any church, school, or hospital. In the new ordinance passed in 2023, it's now 600 feet from any church, childcare facility, hospital, school. I feel like there's two more that I'm missing that I read off earlier.
I think it's a park.
No.
It's not a park.
No, well, let's see. I'll look at my notes. But essentially, they would have to fall in line with the new, or new distancing requirements and. And a lot of times in certain areas, like in my mind, what I always come to is Fourth Street where there is a lot of them that are right there, which were permitted under the 2014 ordinance. And right behind Fourth Street is a, is existing neighbors, right, or a neighborhood. And that's also residential zoning district. So like, let's say that a game room on Fourth Street lapsed in their permit or something happened where they got in trouble or it got revoked, it got suspended, anything, that's now treated as a new gaming site and it can't be there anymore.
I'm going to take the answer to my question as a yes, there seems to be loopholes. But number two, and this ain't, you probably can't answer this, but I'm assuming that as the Madam Attorney mentioned, we are policing these sites to try to close these loopholes. And that would be a yes.
Yeah, so they, they do, they do regular inspections. There's a member of her staff who does regular inspections with members of the police department to make sure that they're hitting all parts of it, to make sure they're in, in, in an inspection, you can feel like, and they write citations, but you have to be in compliance with all of our ordinance. So if someone's in there smoking, if someone, if the gaming permit isn't properly posted, if they don't have all the documentation, any, anything that's a violation of the ordinance, if the door is locked, can constitute them. And if they're, if they receive a violation under the ordinance, they can essentially have their permit revoked. And I, I haven't had to write a revocation for a permit in quite some time. I don't know how many we've had to, we've.
Been a couple, but for the most part, everyone has been abiding by the permitting regulations and whatnot, which is what I, what I oversee is the permitting side of all of that. But there have been a couple of revocations where we've, we've had to, to ban a couple sites. Well, not ban, but they had to do a new location or a new application and it was applicable to the new gaming ordinance and thus couldn't be at that location anymore.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Neal.
Yes. So I see the next step that goes before planning, then it comes back to city council.
That would be if you guys were to move forward with choice one or two. If there's no change, then we keep status quo and we continue exactly how we're, we're doing right now.
But well, I said that, and don't take this the wrong way, before, people up here are not going to be here by that time. Will you be able to present this information to the newly seated council?
It would be for sure at the planning commission review.
Yeah, so the, the next step is for us to bring it to planning because obviously it is something that's in their, in their purview, just to kind of update them on this case. That is a public hearing meeting. And so the planning, at that time, the newly city council can make comments on, on this, but also you could, the planning commission will be making a recommendation as to what they feel. They could say that they don't want any change. They could say that they want to amend the permitted use table, but we, we will provide a presentation to them similar to this and, and see if there's, there's any action that needs to be taken. And then if, if there's nothing, then there's nothing that comes back before the council. If there is, then there's such. Council also has, one of the, the biggest things though is that if, if we're talking about, if, if council or any, anybody says they want to ban it, there is a process that has to happen, meaning it has to be go through planning and zoning to have it removed from the permitted use table, then it has to come back to council for council to vote on that recommendation. There needs to be notices that are sent out to operators and owners and there needs to be an equitable amount of time for them to remove them from their property.
Thank you.
And I will, real quick, I will say that having learned about the potential of repealing Article Six or the potential of changing the permitted use table, we have stopped about a week and a half ago, just freezing application intake because I don't want to accept anyone's money for new applications with knowing that it, we may not move forward with, with this. So that has stopped and we, my staff has sent, I think it was like, I think it was like 200 letters or so to owners and operators that are on file with us about the potential of May 19th, so that they're aware and whatever outcome it is today that you guys would like to move forward, I'm also going to send another round of letters to let them know if they want to be heard to come to that planning commission meeting.
Councilman Neal, then Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I think they answered most of my questions, but I will say that everybody that sits on this council now and everybody that's going to sit on this council knows that nothing good happens at these establishments. They're not good for the community. They prey on, on the weak and they're just not safe sites. So I personally support banning them all.
Councilman Turner.
When this comes back to us, I see we had a conflict and one group said it wasn't issues with law enforcement and our law enforcement. I would like for them to kind of provide us some facts, you know, some teeth, that incidents that they've dealt with and how do they feel about this? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make you do it today, chief, but I, I do want, and if you want to, that's fine, but it's a city attorney.
Obviously, it's, it's one of those things that we could do during the public hearing on, on May 19th with the planning commission. I think that'd be, I think that'd be more appropriate for that because then obviously those owners could be here to also speak. It's a work session. Work sessions are intended for us to have a dialogue with council. And so obviously, if you want chief to speak today, he can, but it would also be behoove him to be present or someone from his staff to be present on the May 19th when those owners and operators and their legal representation will have a chance to present as well.
Yeah, well, Mr. Manager, on the 19th, I would like for chief to have the opportunity to speak because I think it's only right if they say it is an issue and it is, we need to hear from our police chief when we do discuss this. So I would like to hear some statements from the police department on the 19th, not today, but on the 19th. My second thing is, do we have places in Beaumont with five or more machines? If so, how?
Yes, sir. A lot of them were established prior to 2014 when Article Six was adopted. So they, they've essentially stayed in grandfather status. We've had a few applications or specific use permits considered over the years. And a lot of them were denied based off land use compatibility and neighboring uses and things like that. But you know, they're, you can establish one, it's just got to go through the specific use permit unless you're within the heavy industrial zoning district, then you're allowed outright.
And just for historical purposes, in 2014, these were very new. Like they had existed in other parts, but this, they're, they're first incidences in Beaumont. And we, again, kind of just fell upon them, did some research and says, hey, we need an ordinance. At the time that this particular council was more business friendly. And there were some people in the community who came forth who said, you know, like these are just, this is just entertainment and these are just, you know, a way to kind of, for a local business owner to enhance their, their customer experience in their, in their business. There was, at the time, we weren't thinking that we were going to have rooms, which is purely game rooms. That wasn't something we, we, we thought that these would mostly be accessory use. And I think that the council at that time believed that as well. And what we saw between the adoption of that 2014 ordinance and the amendment of our 2003 ordinance, 23 ordinance, is that that was not the case. There were, there were, there were several cases of illegal gambling made during that time. There were several calls for services that we tracked during that time. There were several things that, that we noticed that we needed to, that we needed to do to improve our ordinance, both for enforcement, but also for our, our citizens who, who were, who game rooms had unfortunately located nearby, the increased traffic, the increased noise for that. So again, at the time that we adopted the 2014 ordinance, we didn't have that data. What you see reflected in our 23, 2023 ordinance is the, the trend, what we learned, what we learned. And I, as Ms. Engman said, our, our current ordinance, whatever council chooses to do is strong and the enforcements are there. But you know, it does invite a certain type of crowd and those do come with consequences.
I know Mr. Boone had his hand up, ma'am, but I would like to see, I hear we talking about in 2014 grandfathered in. When it comes back to the new council, I would like to see what plan is moving forward because if the grandfathered in based upon the reports is issued, I think that's something we needed to address initially as far as how we do it moving forward. And ma'am, Mr. Boone had his hand up and I have one more after this.
Just wanted to add, you know, add a little bit of detail to respond to Mr. Turner's, Councilman Turner's question that in 2019, we amended the ordinance, the original ordinance in order to allow for the zoning requirements that Ms. Engman has spoken to. And since 2019, in terms of new game rooms, we've had very few that have been approved.
So that, that's a plus to see based upon that change, the difference in the cause and where they go. And my last question is, just common sense with a game room, I want to know, oh, do we allow game rooms to have memberships? Anybody that want to go in can go in. I can guarantee you nine times out of 10, if it's memberships, that's something that we really need to look into versus anybody going in. You can really dictate what's going on.
Well, I think that there is, there are some, not necessarily game rooms, but I think we do have some private poker rooms in Beaumont that do memberships and it's a different lawsuit that's still, still out there and ongoing. But I, I do think that they have memberships and then they are, they do have some days that are what they consider or some passes that allows it to be open to the public. But there are, there are some poker rooms, I believe, that have memberships but not game rooms.
And I will say Section 6.10.020 restricts or prohibits memberships from game rooms.
So that's the one thing I would like to know. So we, we send cops in, you mean to tell me they can go in anywhere they want and every room will let them come in and investigate?
So part of the ordinance requires inspection, so it is a automatic revocation of your permit if you deny access to, for inspection. So if you deny inspection, if you deny them to, any parts of it to inspect, if you don't, we get to see who's working your books, who you have listed. If you deny any part of the inspection, if you don't comply with inspection, that is a violation of the ordinance and up to including revocation.
I understand. I just don't want to be green. I'm not talking about inspect. I'm talking about can anybody just go in there and play?
Yes, they can't, they, you can't have your doors locked. You can't, like the ordinance is very comprehensive.
If they're currently requiring memberships, that is a violation of this ordinance and I would, I would like to know.
So when we say, when we say, when we said grandfather, we meant based on location. We didn't say, we didn't mean operating practices. And the attorney who spoke earlier, Mr. Enick, was, was very correct. There were several existing game rooms that had to make modifications to their business in order for us to agree to produce a permit to them. Some of them who, who went on essentially a, a timeframe to get their, you know, said that, hey, right now you don't qualify for a permit, so you, you don't, you're going to risk losing it. They had to, to pull the permits and bring their buildings up to code. They had to remove tent from their building. They had to, some of them had to do major renovations to their, to their businesses because they had game rooms behind a quote unquote locked door and they had to have it opened up. They had to, like I said, remove the tent and, and put the, put the permit where it was visible from the street, not at, not in some back room. And so some of them had to make a, a major modifications to their existing buildings in order to do that. It had to meet fire code. They had to put in sprinklers. They had to, they had to do the things that they needed to do in order for it to meet the standard of the ordinance. And then they, and if they didn't, they didn't qualify for a permit. So most of them did lose grandfather status because they were either unable to make the modifications because they were renting the building or they just lacked the funding to do so. And so that was, that was kind of thing. So when we say grandfather, we don't mean that you get to operate and that the conditions and under the terms that you originally be operating, you, you have to come up to code and, or come up to standards for the ordinance. That only applies to location and location only. So again, if council said we wanted to amend the permitted use table for it to align more closely with our sexually oriented business rules and regulation or, or put in any additional restrictions that were maybe recommended by planning and zoning, the existing operators would be allowed to remain where they are up and until sometime as they, their permits were revoked or lapsed. Or they, or if they sold it because that permit is also non-transferable. So if they sold the business or the location, they would also lose their permit as well.
And lastly, I read an article that Orange banned them and today I kind of heard that they're trying to ban them. I, I just want some clarity on which one it is at the next meeting.
So Orange put forth a, a recommendation to ban them out. We haven't determined whether or not they, it's on their agenda if it's been approved by their council or not.
From my knowledge, or to my knowledge, that it hasn't been officially approved yet, but I can certainly reach out and get that back to you.
Orange doesn't meet as regularly as our council, so if they put it on their agenda, if they put it out, if it was made known, it's the time, but it hasn't, to our knowledge, hasn't occurred yet.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to adjust a bit, earlier, Councilmember Gads mentioned about the inconsistencies of enforcement versus the state versus cities and what that means. You know, the comptroller's office, we have comptroller Hager there who's one of the more respected state officials out there as he happily goes day and night, I believe, to, to take over, over in them. But you know, there's still that thing, this was, this was brought about with a court action, a lawsuit by the city of, of Fort Worth. And there's still this, this bit of thought by the state that cities overreach sometimes. So they're thinking that a city is overreaching in some form or fashion because they, and they say that under the guise or for real, that cities are limiting business. The cities are not as pro-business as the state of Texas. So if the state of, I mean, the city of Fort Worth is bringing this action and the state doesn't look at it as being so friendly or, or being against business, whether it is or not, that can, that can determine how much the state will enforce it, quite frankly. And unfortunately, that's happening a lot with cities versus the state of Texas right now.
Councilman Gads.
Mr. Manager, what you say is true, but there's also wide sentiment in the state legislature against casino gambling. And so, you know, with that being led by the lieutenant governor and the Senate, I can't see how they would, on the one hand, say no to casino gambling, but then say, you know, the Supreme Court's determination is somehow inappropriate on these machines.
So, so I think it's important again to point out that, A, like the city of Fort Worth didn't put forth this lawsuit, they just wanted to have a strong ordinance and they wanted to regulate where they went. This is a zoning case. The, the owners, bar, I think it was a bar, it wasn't even like straight game room sites. It was bar owners and pub owners that kind of initiated, which in our, in our city, we would call them accessory use sites, initiated this lawsuit. The city of Fort Worth just wanted to have some, some clean zoning, right? They, they just didn't want these game rooms, you know, next to residential neighborhoods. And it would be kind of like if J Wilson's wanted to put in a, a game room, some game sites in Fort Worth, they would have been like, yeah, we don't want that there. And so that's all they, that's all they were initially trying to do. I think what, what's important and how we need to interpret is that the fuzzy animal exceptions, those game rooms, Chuck E. Cheese can be in there, which means if Jay Wilson's, I'm just saying that because I'm hungry right now, if they wanted to put, if they wanted to put a Pac-Man machine or a pinball machine in their, in their restaurant, they could because those machines have already been deemed to be games that, that require skill and not chance, right? And so it's, it's interesting, what they're saying is that those eight liner machines don't qualify for that restrictions. So we can have greater restrictions, greater zoning restrictions, greater operating restrictions for those type of machines. But, but unfortunately, the state of Texas hasn't said, yep, you can ban them. What they're saying is that they're, the Fort Worth Court of Appeals said is that they're unconstitutional and the Texas Supreme Court says, well, you talk about it anymore then. And so they, and so they haven't. So there's, there has not been a state finding from our, our higher court to say yes or no on that issue. And to the manager's point, like there are a lot of states that are kind of relying on the Fort Worth Court of Appeals to say that it's unconstitutional, but that, that doesn't prohibit another game room operator or, or group of operators from saying, it's not really clear because if we, if the state of Texas will give us a permit, why won't city X give us a permit? And so not, not a position either way, but I think it's important and incumbent on, on the council to understand and even the, the planning commission that'll hear this later is that there is a, there is a gap there where the four court, court of appeals said, hey, these are unconstitutional, they don't meet the fuzzy, fuzzy exception because I think we all agree that the bar owners are saying, we do because we are a game of, of skill. And they're like, there's not a lot of skill in pushing a button, not a lot of skill in pulling a lever. So no, that's a game of chance. And so because they, they made that, the distinction, all the court really said is, because, because you don't meet this exception, a city can enforce higher regulations. And because they did kind of say that it was unconstitutional, I think everybody initially just said, you know, hey, then they're illegal and we should ban them. But that's not, that has not been determined by the state of Texas.
All right, anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, we're good. Go ahead.
I guess one thing I'd, before we close the work session, I guess we do need to kind of choose a, a direction. to kind of choose a, a direction.
So it, Demi, for that purpose, it is gonna go to the, the Planning Commission to kind of give them the update and Planning Commission will make a recommendation to council and then council can decide what they wanna do. Regardless of what planning, they can either accept their recommendation from Planning Commission or make their own, just like any other recommendation from planning.
Okay.
All right, and as we go into council member comments, I do wanna, uh, next week, there will be canvassing in the swearing in, but there will be comments for those that, uh, will be leaving coun, gonna have an opportunity for them to make comments before the swearing in of the, of the new councilman, just to be aware of. And now we'll do council member comments and we'll start with Councilman Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Felschau?
I'll save mine for next week.
Okay. Councilman Turner?
I just appreciate the discussion today. I'm just looking forward to what the outcome is because I understand being aligned with both, but we got a gray area, but I wanna see what we can get Orlando for clarity. So I appreciate this being brought up today and discussed. And I save my comments next week for some of my colleagues that'll be leaving me. Some that I learned from, some I argue with often and hug behind closed doors, but I'm just looking forward to what we got in the future and just saying what I gotta say to some of you guys on next week. I'm gonna save it.
Thank you, Councilman Turner, and Councilman Gatz.
No, I'm not saving anything. No, I, um, I want y'all to think about when y'all were in kindergarten and as you went through the years, first grade, second grade, third grade, you know, all the way up to graduating from high school, how long that took. Y'all remember going to school all that long? Well, I've been on city council that long and longer. And during that time, that 14 years that I've been on city council, I've only missed two meetings, once when I was in the hospital with food poisoning and once when my late wife passed away on a Tuesday. So I'm, I'm pretty proud of that. And, um, I think, uh, regular attendance at council meetings, if you're an elected member, is, is something that's important. And over those 14 years, I think I've developed a reputation of being responsive to the needs of citizens and a reputation for fiscal responsibility for promoting cost-effective improvements to the quality of life. Examples are things like Oktoberfest, uh, Dog Park Pavilion at Rogers Park. Uh, oh, the Dog Park cost $125,000, we determined, not the $2 million that was being sent by my opponent in this last election. We've also, uh, I'm proud of the infrastructure and one council member can't do a lot in getting infrastructure done. They have to have three others to support them. And I feel fortunate that over the years, the, uh, infrastructure that has been brought toward too, has been substantial. Things like sidewalks along Major Drive in McLean and, uh, on Dallin, uh, we've improved the streets, resurfaced almost every street in a million. Again, that's not me, that's the council as a whole, we have to allocate funding for that. Drainage has been improved, sewer systems have been improved, we've done a lot of pipe bursting, I'm proud of all of those things. I will miss the ability to help my fellow citizens. That's why I serve. I don't consider myself a politician, I consider myself a public servant. I have yet to see my opponent, who will be sworn in next week, sit through the entirety of a city council meeting. He's not here now. I hope once he's sworn in, he will find the ability to have a higher sense of duty and will stay to the end of these meetings. This election was tough and it opened my eyes to a lot of things. It exposed hidden agendas. It, uh, it helped me to observe people who I regarded as friends abandon their moral compass and do things that I never thought would be done. But that's okay. I will miss my third city council meeting in my tenure next week, I won't be here. But it has been my highest privilege and honor to serve the citizens of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Durio?
I just reached a personal milestone yesterday. Five years ago on Cinco de Mayo, May the 5th, I had a eight hour long cancer surgery. And, um, it's been five years since then. And, um, that's a milestone for me because the type of cancer I had, most people don't make it past two. And I've been here for five years and I, my last screening, they said, now I just had to go back and see him once a year. Started off with every three months, then every six months and now it's, it's once a year. And after seven years, I don't have to go back at all. So that's a milestone for me, I'm glad I'm here. And I always tell everybody, almost exactly one year to the day after that surgery, I got elected to city council. So I said the Lord had a plan for me and I'm, I'm glad I was able to, I'm glad I'm still here, I made a lot of friends and I, I made a lot of people I probably would've never met if I wasn't on council. And I enjoy it and I plan to continue to enjoy this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam City Attorney?
Well, I wanna first take congratulations to Councilman Durio, that's beautiful and I'm grateful that you made it through surgery and I'm happy that you're here today. But today is one of my favorite days because today is my daddy's birthday, so I'm gonna take a personal privilege and say happy birthday to my dad, who is my hero and one of my favorite people on the planet.
Okay, daddy's girl. Congratulations, uh, Councilmember Durio for doing that. Now I'd just like to acknowledge the nurses here, that what nurses do is one of the greatest things that happens in this country. You know, I, uh, went through a surgery about a year ago, a little over a year, major surgery and I was at an event at the MCM a couple of weeks ago and I was walking down the hallway and this lady just asked me how I was doing and, you know, and I'm like, who is this person? And she said, I was a nurse during your surgery. I had no idea you don't know. But they offer such great things to us and we just really need to appreciate what they're doing. They're some of the greatest people we have here in, in the world, so I just appreciate them. And I'll make my comments next week, Mike, for you.
Councilman Turner?
Well, Mike, since you said you weren't gonna be here, instead of me making my comments next week, I'm the kind of person, I like to look people in the eyes like men and say what I gotta say to them face to face. So when I first got elected, everyone told me, AJ, it's gonna be impossible for you to deal with Mike Gatz. Y'all won't be able to work together, you won't be able to get nothing done with him. He's this kind of person, that kind of person, but I will say, my experience with you, Mike, has been a privilege. I've learned a lot from you. I've learned about, you better have your facts together when you debate with Mike. I learned every time I went to any of your neighborhood associations, you were always present. And I learned how important it was to respond to people who had issues within the community and I took pride in that as well. I wanna say it's been a privilege and honor to serve with you. One thing I respect about you is, me and you can have a tough conversation, agree to disagree, we shake hands and we back at work and trying to get things done the following day. So I respect what you've done as a council member. I feel like you were real strong and I appreciate your service. And I'm glad to say publicly that what everybody said, that we couldn't work together, I couldn't deal with you, I enjoy working with you as a councilman, man. I wish you success in your future, all right? Thank you, Mike.
All right, and, uh, remind everybody that this Saturday is the Greek Festival. And, uh, again, all the nurses, I felt like if any medical event happened at the beginning of the meeting, we would all been good. But with that, the meeting is now adjourned.